Welcome, and we'll call the meeting to order, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. First Commissioner Coggan will lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by John Rogers leading us into pledge.
Today is not Veterans Day, but of course yesterday was, and in honor of that, I'd like to read an excerpt from a column that was in the News Journal yesterday by Lieutenant Colonel Rob Waldman. He was a guest columnist yesterday. Lieutenant Colonel Waldman is a former Combat Decorated Fighter Pilot, Leadership Speaker, and author of the new book Never Fly Solo. "As Americans, how can we pay tribute to our veterans and to those currently serving on this special day, or any day, I might add? We do it by committing ourselves to service in our everyday lives and creating an environment in which our country that embraces the values and principles that our soldiers fight to protect. We should honor our responsibilities as parents, employees, and business owners, live with integrity at home and at work, lend a wing and help those who are suffering in this tough economy, respect our environment, give to charity, and volunteer in our communities. In essence, we need to set the example and live our lives with honor and integrity so that our veterans and troops abroad can truly say, 'America is worth fighting for.'" So my question today to you is this: Are you worth fighting for? You are America. Don't look upon your neighbor to serve if you aren't willing to do so yourself. Service begins with you. I believe you don't need to wear a flight suit or Army fatigues to serve our country. The best way we can thank our veterans is to make them proud of us through our own personal commitment, courage, and compassion. We need to be warriors for freedom and do the right thing by living with honor. This is how we can make Veterans Day and every day a day worth celebrating. Before, Coach Ricky Fields was a Riverdale Warrior. He was a warrior for Christ and a warrior for our children in our schools, and he still is. He's been serving with the FCA for many years and has made a difference in many, many people. When we moved to Murf-- when I moved to Murfreesboro, and when I started at Central, I was scared to death to walk in Central Middle School. And who was my first gym teacher at that school but Coach Ricky Fields? Ten years later, Coach Ricky Fields, me never seeing him after that, remembered my name, remembered my face, and gave me a big old hug. So Coach Ricky Fields, as you make our veterans proud by being a warrior for our schools and for our children and for Christ, I ask you to please lead us in the prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you right now. We thank you for the veterans, Father God. Lord, we plead the blood of Jesus over them right now, Father God, that no weapon formed against whoever prospers, Father God. We thank that there's a protection around them, Father God. We thank you for Mayor Burgess, Father God, and all the commissioners here, Father God, on this special night to celebrate, Father God, some young people, Father God, Father God, some people that have did great things in this community, Father God. We thank you, Father God, for Mayor Burgess' leadership and the commission of leadership, Father God. We thank you for the leaders here, Father God, in all Rutherford County and the city, Father. We, Lord, we just praise you right now for all the representatives here, Father God, that may have served in the wars, Father God, may have served their conscience, Father God, in all endeavors, Lord. And Lord, we just thank you that you continue to love us, continue to take care of us, and Lord, we ask it right now in your precious Son, Jesus' name, to watch over this assembly tonight, Father God, and, Father God, when it's all said and done, to be pleasing in your sight, Lord. And we give you honor and glory. That's in Jesus' name, that's in Jesus' authority, we ask it all. Would you please praise, amen?
Amen. (Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
President.
Commissioner Bullen.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Okay, thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes as mail.
We have a second on that motion. Commissioner Jernigan, are there any corrections or additions? Okay, they're being done. I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we have a time for public comments, and we have four people that wish to speak tonight, so our first speaker is Ms. Sonia Stevenson. If she would come forward and give us her name and address, and while she's coming forward, we'll ask our clerk, Mrs. Lynch, if she would come out there and please join her, just if you don't mind.
My name is Sonia Stevenson, and I reside at 2216 Higgins Lane in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Good evening, Mayor Burgess, Commissioners. The county likes to recognize our employees who have been with us. We do milestone anniversaries, and we do these quarterly, and from time to time, there are those special people who, because of the nature of their work, are unable to attend our recognition breakfast, and one of those individuals this last time was Ms. Lynch. Ms. Georgia Lynch has been with the county for thirty-five years. She's had great dedication and good work ethic and tried to lead this county into a wonderful place to be and work, and the county would like to thank her for that time, and here's your certificate. And here is your award for thirty-five years of service. And thank you so much. It's an honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that was very moving, and we really appreciate that, and the many, many years of service that she's provided is certainly well-deserved, this recognition. Next we have to speak is Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Fight federal encroachment. Citizens throughout our county and nation are awakening to what the federal government is doing to ignore the God-given Constitution of the United States and to force the American people to adopt a socialistic dictatorship. Very shocking violations of the citizens' constitutional rights are incorporated in the proposed federal or national health care bill. The bill includes threats by the federal government to people who do not follow government dictates, for example, huge financial penalties as well as imprisonment. But the basic issue of the proposed federal health care plan is that your life and your health will no longer be an issue between you and the doctor of your choice, but will rest in the hands of a bureaucrat-infested government with little regard for human life, which is evident in the current Democratic administration's zeal to fund abortion, not only nationally but also worldwide. The federal government not only is attempting to remove your personal freedom through nationalizing your health care, but is also working hard to deny the state's rights of Tennessee as well as the sovereignty of every state. A good example is the current dispute over the Tennessee Firearms Freedom Act. The federal government is denying Tennessee's right to retain firearms-related revenue as well as the right to regulate certain aspects of the firearms industry. In this example, as well as in other instances, the federal government is intent on denying Tennessee the sovereignty guaranteed to it by the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution. State Representative Susan Lynn, the chairman of the Committee of Conference and Correspondence in the Tennessee House of Representatives, told me today that this committee is working hard to rally the other states to reaffirm and protect the sovereignty of their states. Therefore, the support you county commissioners give to this state committee will go a long way in our effort to save our constitutional form of government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Todd. Next speaker is Mr. Steve Schrader.
My name is Steve Schrader. I live at 676 Cottonfield Lane in Mr. Farley's district, and first I would like to thank the military personnel, both currently active and past, for making this evening possible. I'd like to talk about two topics tonight, with regard to county attorney, and that's the legal services agreement and the private act. I would ask that the commission rescind the private act, rescind the legal services agreement of seventeen September, as the steering committee did. With regard to the private act of 2010, it was delivered to the commissioners rather late, and they haven't had very much time to read and review it before it got into the steering committee for a vote. Interesting, the legal services agreement is part of that draft, so how do we go about changing the legal services agreement in the future? Is that going to have to be approved by the Tennessee General Assembly? I don't know. One of the things that we did was we compared the private acts of some other counties with regard to county attorneys to Rutherford County, and we gave you a letter, and in that letter, page two, has a table on it that shows a comparison of the features in various private acts for Mari, Madison, Sumner, Wilson counties, and also for our current private act and for the proposed private act. Each private act feature in the county has a number on it, and that's associated with the section of that private act so that you can facilitate your research. Interestingly enough, the private act that we have for Rutherford County currently is in common with a lot of the other counties. The draft private act for 2010 only has a written agreement to identify the features that are being suggested. That private, that written agreement has not yet been approved by you folks. Also, the other counties do not have a dependence on a written agreement. In conclusion, there's no need to rush this. We've got two years. We would like the Rutherford County private act to be a standalone document, and would suggest that you form an ad hoc committee made up of commissioners and interested citizens. We took the opportunity to contact some folks within the community so that we could take advantage of the latent skills that we have here. I talked with Mr. King Jameson of the Middle Tennessee State University Retired Professors Group. I talked with Mrs. Betty Machay, who is a current chairman of the Military Officers Association of America, and Mr. George Garner, who's quite well-known within the State Farm retiree community. These three people have not necessarily volunteered to be on the ad hoc committee, but they have volunteered to be appointed contacts so that they can get with their organization to identify skilled people that would assist you in this ad hoc committee. In closing, please rescind the legal services agreement of seventeen September, and two, please form an ad hoc committee that's going to be open to the public. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, Susan Allen.
I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I want you to know that I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. As a member of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, I hope that what matters to us also matters to you. On that note, when you get to the steering committee's report, I would urge you to vote in favor of their recommendation to rescind the legal services agreement that you previously approved in September. The steering committee will also be introducing the private act of 2010 for county attorney this evening. After reading this proposed act and listening to the steering committee's discussion, we were especially confused by the reference to the written agreement that would be, quote, "by law incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim," end quote, in Section Two. We couldn't figure out how you could approve a private act when part of it was missing. This made us curious about how other counties worded their private acts. In a brief internet search, as Steve said, the RNA found county attorney private acts from half a dozen other Tennessee counties, none of which made use of a referenced document. We believe that the Rutherford County Act should stand on its own and not be dependent on such a document. We also found some very interesting wording in those other counties' acts that are included in the handout that I gave you tonight. Page one has a couple examples about employing outside counsel. Check the underlined wording for Sumner County. Quote, "No officer of the county shall employ any other attorney unless such other attorney be required by the conflicting nature of specific litigation involved," or "Such other attorney shall be employed at the personal expense of the county officer," or "Other county attorney or other attorney shall be specifically authorized and empowered by the Sumner County Board of Commissioners," end quote. Page two has examples of how the attorney's compensation is decided. Sumner County also obligates their law director to submit a budget for approval. Page three has examples of how Madison, Sumner, and Wilson outline the duties of the office. Madison County's is the most detailed at two paragraphs. Sumner and Wilson accomplish theirs in one sentence. None require a referenced written agreement. Pages four and five have examples of how the attorney is to be selected, term of office, required oath, and qualifications. Finally, on page six, Madison County covers the eventuality that if any part of their act should be held invalid, that the rest of the act would not be affected. This might be important if there are changes in state law. Please, take a hands-on approach to this process and take the time to make this private act an effective foundation for a future full-time attorney, because the public welfare requires it. And don't forget, you're all invited to come to our pottery studio next weekend during the Art Studio Tour to see where my husband and I make our living, when I'm not busy telling you how to do your job. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, we're, we have some resolutions of recognition, and without objection from the body here, the first person that we want to recognize, Mr. Fernando Bryant, is in transit and will be here shortly, so we're going to go ahead and start with the second one and the third one, and when he arrives then we will come back if that's okay with this body, but he is in this direction coming. So we'll call on then Commissioner Farley to have a resolution of recognition with respect to David Price.
Thank you, Mayor. David, if you wouldn't please, sir, could you please come up, please? While David's coming up, it's fitting that we're doing this tonight based on the news that was on ESPN today. You see athletes doing what they did at the University of Tennessee. You know, it makes you even prouder when you see a guy like this right here, on and off the field, stands up as a gentleman and a great gentleman. Wanted to recognize David for what he has done on and off the field. With that, David, and I got a resolution here, I'd like to recognize you, sir. Whereas David Taylor Price was born August the 26th, 1985, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and is an American League left-handed Major League Baseball starting pitcher for the Tampa Bay Rays, who selected him first overall in the 2007 Major League Baseball Draft. And whereas David began his playing baseball in his early childhood and was a standout at Blackman High School baseball and basketball teams from 2000 to 2004. And whereas though drafted by the Los Angeles Dodgers out of high school, David did not sign, but instead he chose to attend the Vanderbilt University on athletic scholarship and pitched for the baseball team for three years from 2004 to 2007. And whereas David was the number-one overall draft pick by the Tampa Bay Rays in 2007, is now a starting pitcher for the team. And whereas though he has won numerous awards and honors over the years, too many to mention, it'd be able to list as long as this paper right here, he has never forgotten his community he was born in and raised in. And through Project One Forward, a David Price Foundation, he has donated clothes, uniforms, school supplies, and computers to the Rutherford County School System, sponsoring multiple community Little League baseball teams, and David will sponsor another benefit in the memory of his best friend at Blackman High School, Nathan Stevens, a University of Tennessee graduate student who died in 2007 while playing a pickup game of basketball. And proceeds from that benefit will go to the Nathan Stevens Endowment Scholarship Fund, providing scholarships for four Blackman High School graduating seniors to attend college. And whereas David was a pitcher in the 2008 American League Championship Series and got his first save and win as a Major League ballplayer, and he pitched in the 2008 World Series. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on the 12th day of November 2009, does hereby extend this resolution of recognition to David Price, recognizing him as an outstanding athlete and humanitarian. Thank you, David. I so move, Mr. Mayor.
This is probably the first award that I've gotten dealing with something off the field, so that's, I appreciate that, you know, y'all think of me in this light, you know, to give me an award, you know, to recognize, you know, what I've done, not only on the field but off the field, so that's, that does mean a lot to me. You know, this is the community I was raised in. My parents have lived here. I've lived here my entire life. I love it here. You know, Murfreesboro is just, it's Murfreesboro, and everything gets around so quick, and that's probably the best way to do it, because you know if you do something bad, someone's going to hear about it. So it's, I love it here, you know, the people here are great, you know, I'll continue to stay here, and thank you. You know, this is not everything, you don't hear, you know, about all the stuff, you know, guys do off the field unless it's bad stuff, so for you to recognize this, you know, the good stuff that I've done, not only on the field but off, I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Farley and David. I have been knowing David's parents for a long, long time. In fact, I've worked many, many years with David's mother, Debbie Price, and we're just, we're just so proud of what he has done, and this is a true reflection, as most accomplishments of all of us, on good parents that really have been a major influence on his life, and we're just thankful for them. Okay, next, we have a large group of people here that we want to recognize, and, excuse me, Commissioner P.
I should call the president.
Oh, good. Y'all stood up and got me a little bit out of sync there. Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Farley, a second by Commissioner Jordan, and all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much for reminding me about that. Okay, now, Commissioner Rogers, you're already here to recognize a wonderful group of young people that are here with us, being our Segal High School band, so are you going to ask all of them to come up here, or all of them that want to, what's your plan?
I am, I'm just asking all of them.
Okay, so let's go for it.
If all, if all the members of the Segal High School Band would please come forward and join me up here at the podium, please. (Applause).
There's a lot of us.
Yeah, 165.
Yeah.
The Segal Band is 165 members strong. I'm sure we have pretty close to that here tonight.
(Laughter).
Well, Mayor, it's my privilege tonight to read this resolution. The Segal High School Band, I live not too far from Segal High School. I can sit out on my back patio and, in the late summer and early fall, can hear the band practicing, and this band practices, and they practice, and they practice, and they practice. They are the hardest-working bunch of kids I've ever seen. They're out there to all hours, and they are really remarkable. They have, all that practice has really paid off this year. They met with tremendous success. They have done a litany of accomplishments here, but really, it was the accomplishment that occurred on Halloween, October 31st of this year, that put them up here. On that day, they competed in the MTSU Contest of Champions, which is annually the state's highest competitive band competition, and in that competition, they were the recipient of the Tennessee Governor's Cup for one year and grand champion, and they were selected among 24 competing bands and eight finalists. So they are the best band, high school band, in the state of Tennessee. It's my pleasure then to want to recognize them tonight with this resolution of recognition. Whereas, under the music direction of Randy Rhodey and Ed Medford, assisted by Annette Rhodey and Jerry Steinheilber, and led by the enthusiastic drum major Matt Boe, in a dazzling display of precision marching, thrilling music, and the color guard's colorful and majestic performance, the Segal High School Band perfected their 2009 program, Paintings in the Night Sky. And whereas on September 3rd, 2009, the Segal High School Band performed at the Travelers' Rest Invitational and won awards for best music, best effect, best percussion, best color guard, and first place overall. And whereas on Saturday, October 17th, 2009, the 2009 Segal High School Band traveled to Atlanta, Georgia, and performed in two competitions. The band there was awarded best color guard, best drum major, best percussion, and first place in class at the Kennesaw Invitational. The band was awarded the Dan Martin Award for Music Excellence, which was given to the highest music award out of 20 bands competing at the Southern Music Invitational, along with being named grand champion, best overall music, best percussion, and best auxiliaries. And whereas on September, or excuse me, on Saturday, October 24th, 2009, the 2009 Segal High School Band performed at the Music City Invitational and won the first-place award for best music and the Mayor's Cup, Mayor's Cup Trophy for best band in division. And whereas on Saturday, October 31st, 2009, the Segal High School Band received the highest honor, recipient of the Tennessee Governor's Cup for one year and grand champion designation, when they were selected among 24 competing bands and eight finalists at MTSU Contest of Champions. Whereas the last time a Rutherford County high school achieved this designation was 1971, and earned by Central High School under the direction of Mr. Bob Lee. And whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, special commendation is due to all 165 band members for their hard work, which made these championships possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their professionalism, dedication, and commitment to excellence. And now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2009 Segal High School Band on all your accomplishments, especially being named grand champion at the MTSU Contest of Champions, and to the band directors and their staff for their dedication and commitment to these young ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, I so move. Second by, who was that? Commissioner Jordan again? Okay, all of you in favor. Okay, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. Do we want to let the director have a few words here, John? Would that be okay?
Yes, I would. I would. Thank you very much. Y'all are very kind. We appreciate that. I'd like to express our support and our appreciation to Mr. Ken Nolan, our head principal. He supports all of our organizations really well. He puts a lot of effort into, into these students and makes, makes it happen. And our fantastic support from our booster and parent organization, they've been behind us the whole way and have helped and have cleared a lot of hurdles and made a lot of great things happen. And especially to the kids, they're super hard workers, they are very committed to excellence, and the future's in good hands. If you get to see these guys work and practice, you know, you know, things are looking pretty good. They're, they're going to do great in the future. So we thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can, we have 165 band members. I'm going to read all their, no, I'm not right now. But what I, what I would like to do, Mayor, in addition to the band directors, Mr. Randy Rhodey, Mr. Ed Medford, I would, I would like to recognize particularly the section leaders of the band. They were, if you would, as I call your name off, if you would, just raise your hand, please. Nancy Kelly, Molly Waxman, Jacqueline Quarles, Jessica Bowles, Rob Tz Blackman, James Sartain, Megan Tidrick, Serena Rhodey, did I miss it? Neely Pistoli, Emily O'Gwin, Lee Wong, Allison Todd, Daniel Murphy, Christian Maddox, John Caldwell, James Ray, Graham Hutchison, Robert Germick, George Lynch, Christina Wilbert, Jessica Kendrick, Emily Crutcher, Leslie Coontapanya?
Coontapanya.
Coontapanya. Caitlin Hayes, and Matt Bowe. All right. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And we have a room full of parents and probably even some grandparents that are really proud of these young people, and we thank you so much for supporting them and helping them accomplish this. And we also have a special parent even sitting up here with us, Mrs. Nolan. She has two fine youngsters in this group. Now, Mr. Fernando Bryant has arrived, and I will advise you that we're running a little behind schedule, but without objection, I would like for us to go ahead with this resolution of recognition regarding Mr. Bryant, please. Mr. Farley.
While Fernando's coming up, Fernando is another product of Rutherford County School System at Riverdale High School. He's traveled a long way, just come, just come in from Atlanta, Georgia. Tell a little bit about how this came about. Bob Summers contacted me and asked me if I'd be interested in doing this recognition for Fernando tonight, not based on what he did on the field, but based on what he did off the field. Bob's wife came down with a disease, and Fernando was willing to put his foundation into effect and, and help them raise money to help combat the disease that his wife has gotten. And I thought, well, I've been working on the deal with David, and I thought we'll get both of you tonight. So here we are. Recognition of recognition, resolution of recognition for Fernando Bryant. Whereas Fernando Bryant was born March 26, 1976, in Camille, Georgia, and attended Riverdale High School, where he started in football as a wide receiver, defensive back, and in track as a sprinter. And whereas as a senior, he garnered All-American honors in football and finished his, the year with six interceptions and 82 tackles on defense and 48 receptions on offense. And whereas during Fernando's college career, he made 40 starts in 45 games, registering 179 tackles while attending the University of Alabama. He played in two bowl games and was All-SCC Second Team Selection in 1996 and 1997, and All-SCC First Team Selection in 1998. And whereas Fernando was selected by Jacksonville Jaguars in the first round of the 1999 NFL Draft and became the second Jaguar to start every game as a rookie. After five seasons with the Jaguars, he signed a six-year deal with Detroit Lions. Unstoppable after spending most of his first season on the injured reserve list, Fernando returned to his starting position as a cornerback in 2006 to start 10 games. And in seven NFL seasons, he started 93 of the 94 games he played in. And whereas after nine NFL seasons and retirement in his sights, Fernando spent the 2008 season training camp with the New England Patriots before signing mid-season with the Pittsburgh Steelers. He started in three games during the regular season due to team injuries and was a team leader in the locker room for the young players. On February the 1st, 2009, Fernando was able to walk on the field of Raymond James Stadium for Super Bowl XLIII and to have a chance to become a world champion. After a heart-stopping game 10 years in the NFL and three teams, Fernando has become a world champion with the Pittsburgh Steelers. And whereas during his career, the Georgian native was named Detroit Lions 2004 Man of the Year and was honored at the Detroit Sports Fans Choice Awards and given the 2004 Humanitarian Award for Outstanding Humanitarian Work by an Athlete. Fernando established the 25 Sports Foundation in 2001 to provide academic services, guidance, encouragement to at-risk youth through a variety of programs in Georgia, Florida, Michigan, and Tennessee. His foundation has worked with Jose Feed the Hungry, the Children's Aid Society, the National Kidney Foundation, and is currently working to build awareness and raise funds for MSA, which is a degenerate neurological disorder and a disease that has ridden the wife of his football coach at Riverdale High School. Whereas in March 2009, Fernando hosted Miracles for MSA, a charity event to generate awareness and raise funds to enable sufferers diagnosed with MSA. The following event, and the following event Fernando donated a total of $10,000 to assist with the cause. And whereas Fernando also mentors inner-city youth through additional programs such as Talk, Talk About Life with Kids at Detroit High, at Detroit High Schools, and activities including essay writing, contest awarding college scholarships to Georgia youth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 12th day of November 2009, does hereby extend the resolution of recognition to Fernando Bryant, recognizing him as an athlete and humanitarian. Fernando, thank you. And I so move, Mr. Chairman.
A second from Commissioner Schaefer. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Fernando, for coming and being with us. We really do appreciate all the good things you're continuing to do after those great things you did with the NFL. Let's see, the next, it is 6:30 and past, so it's time for us to have our public hearing. And we have first, a rezoning and conditional use permit request, 09-A015. The applicant is Mitchell Bowman, located on Jefferson Pike. The existing zoning is R15, and the proposed zoning is services. And a conditional use permit for storage units and boat storage is the request, and the size of that site is about 8.85 acres. And Elizabeth Imbsley will come forward, and she will give us some more basic information, and she'll be here to address any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Commission. The application before you, the applicant is proposing to build a self-storage unit facility with covered boat storage. The concept plan you can find in front of you in the packet I provided. You'll see that there's not currently an office shown in the concept plan, however, the applicant has indicated that there are septic soils available if an office is ever needed. Currently, it's proposing to have a fence provided with a keypad gate entry for security. The concept plan does show it being accessed via an existing residential access easement. However, one of the conditions placed on this by the planning commission was that a separate access for the business be created. Another condition placed by the planning commission was that the outside of the covered boat storage be built with brick or masonry-type material. The reason behind this is that the covered boat storage is essentially acting as the outside wall for about two-thirds of the property. And if you used a brick or masonry-type material, it would, of course, enhance the appearance of the building and also reduce the amount of screening required for the structure. Now, another, other conditions were added by the planning commission, which included to ensure the storage units would be used properly, such as no living within the facilities, no band practice, et cetera. There is two commercial properties located on Jefferson Pike near the property. It's also located relatively close, about two-thirds of a mile from the intersection of Lebanon and Jefferson Pike. And in that, in that area, there is retail wholesale trade, services, C2, all commercial zones. The North Area Land Use Plan shows the future land use of this property as mixed use. The plan states that mixed use would support activities such as light commercial, office, and housing. The planning commission did recommend approval for this application by a vote of 10 for and zero against, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Imbsley before we have the public hearing? Okay, that being said, Ms. Imbsley, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this project, please come forward and give us your name and address and, and make your statement regarding this application. Is anyone that wishes to speak? There is one young lady. Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Hughes, and I live at 680 West Jefferson Pike, which is right next door to where this proposed zoning change is, is being made. My husband and I have lived there for nine years with our children, and we just have some logical concerns about this commercial property going in right next door to where we live. Number one, our main logical concern is for the privacy of our family and our friends who do come back into our property. We have, we also have concerns about the traffic that will be, that will be a part of this commercial coming and going, this commercial property coming and going. Jefferson Pike is, is just a two-lane road. It's, has very, very much, a lot of traffic on, on Jefferson Pike, pretty much all day long. I'm concerned about getting in and out of my driveway easily with this proposed zoning change going in, this commercial change going in. Another concern that I have is with this commercial, commercial property going in, what will this do to my property taxes? These are just some concerns that we have as residents going, living right here where this, this zoning change is, is being proposed.
Thank you very much. Is there, are there others that wish to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone else rising to speak, so I'm going to assume that's all of those that wish to address this. So we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Now, do we have anyone that wishes to make a recommendation concerning this request? Commissioner Black?
First, I'd like to ask Ms. Imbsley, was some of these conditions that she had talked about here, was they addressed at the planning commission level, as far as the traffic and so forth?
Sure, we don't have any traffic projections for it. The applicant is indicating that there'd be about 120 to 130 units. There wouldn't be any employees, so I think the traffic would be, you know, minor, but there would be a minor impact.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions set forth by the planning commission.
Second by, who is it? Commissioner Johnson? We have a motion and a second now. Discussion. Does anyone wish to speak? Commissioner P.
The only question I had, and I think it was answered in the notes there, but I wanted to make sure, there is a proposal from state legislation I hear to widen that road, which I assume is part of, I know it's in that, in our plan, but if that road is widened, do we have enough right-of-way given to take care of the road widening there?
One of the conditions on approving this conditional use permit is that 25 feet of right-of-way be dedicated to the county, and that would bring it up to, at least that portion, that side of the road be brought up to what we need for expansion.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandlin?
That is approval with the conditions, correct, that we've got on here. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or discussions here? Hearing none, then you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion, what, we have one, one no vote, let the record reflect. We had unanimous except for one no. All right, thank you. Now, the next agenda item, Mrs. Imbsley requires discussion regarding a zoning resolution amendment, and this is some more continued amendments to the flood hazard district regulations.
Right. As you'll remember, back in September, we sent through amendments to our Article 19 flood hazard districts. Since that time, staff has noticed a few minor revisions that need to be made. Just, this include some revised language to the floodway regulations and a couple of handful of places where sections should have been cited. So we just want to go ahead and, and bring those to your attention and get them in our regulations. This once again will not change the way that the county processes this district. That will all remain the same, and will also not change flood elevations. This is just a couple of minor language revisions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Imbsley? Okay, thank you very much. We will have to have a public hearing to see if anyone wants to address these proposed housekeeping changes. We'll declare the public hearing open with respect to these zoning resolutions amendments regarding our flood hazard district regulations. So the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this zoning resolution amendment? Okay, there's no one rising to speak, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Now, does anyone wish to make a motion concerning the improvement of this request? Commissioner Sandlin? Do we have a second? Commissioner Farley? Now, is there other discussion? Commissioner Howell?
Is there any way in the future we can get these a little bit earlier? I wasn't aware of any of this till tonight, and I'm hurriedly trying to go through it and see what we got.
Oh, I apologize.
I know we're utilizing email a lot on our committee meetings and our emailing those out. Can we PDF these and maybe start emailing them out a little bit?
We can attempt to. Historically, our maps create large PDFs, but we can definitely try to start sending them out in email form. We do currently mail them, so we'll be happy to give that a try.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote then. All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's see, now, we're ready to come back to the agenda, and we're going to talk, have the elections and confirmation, and while Mr. Coggan is coming forward, Mr. Coggan, just a point of clarification under agenda item H7, where that word says confirmation, this really doesn't require confirmation, it's simply an announcement. So you can announce those reappointments, if you would, please.
Commissioners, you have before you a list of notaries, applicant for notaries. Chairman, I move for their approval.
All right. Motion, the second, Commissioner Sandlin to approve this list of notaries. Anyone have any questions or concerns? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Second on the agenda is we need to announce four vacancies on the agricultural board. Third, we need to announce a vacancy on the community care board. Also, we need to announce a alternate vacancy on the beer board. Fifth on the agenda is the appointment of Carolyn Overton and Fifth on the agenda is the appointment of Carolyn Overton and Lori Collander as judicial commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Anyone have any discussion there? Okay, all those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's not unanimous.
Number six is the confirmation of appointment of Mr. Vincent Windrow to the planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Luan Zelnik, that term to expire on August 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for his approval.
Second by Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And also, even though, sorry.
What, excuse me, what was that? That was a confirmation.
Yes, sir.
So...
Do I get to announce this again, or is your announcement suffice?
Yeah, you need to go ahead and be official.
I didn't want to have to, you know, rescind it and come back. We need to announce the reappointment of Mr. Carter Woodruff and Craig Lynch to the Consolidated Utility District Board.
Yes, Commissioner P.
I think these two men are some of the finest gentlemen I know, so I don't want them to take offense to what I'm fixing to ask to our county attorney. The way I understand their charter is their board, or whoever controls Consolidated Water Utility District, makes recommendations, not the commission or the mayor. But it's my understanding that we could refuse a nomination. Is that correct, or am I, am I wrong?
Actually, it is the authority of the county mayor to make the appointment, and if he chooses, or she chooses, as the case may be, the mayor, to reappoint or appoint any one of the three recommended individuals, then those can be rejected, and at that point, the CUD board would have to come forward with other recommendations. And ultimately, though, the county mayor is the one who makes the appointment. So the board of the utility district makes recommendations in order of preference, but it is ultimately the mayor's decision as to who's appointed, and he can reject any or all recommendations.
Well, I would suggest that that was a confirmation.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that. We will move forward then through the agenda. There is a...
Chairman?
Commissioner Bullen?
Commissioner Coggan failed to make a note under confirmations. He's the father again, he's a father again, and he has a brand-new baby at home, so we want to congratulate him on that and get the approval of the commission for him to continue to be a good father.
Thank you for bringing some levity here to this and humor, Commissioner Bullen. We need that from time to time. Okay, there's no unfinished business, so we're ready to move forward to the reports by standing committees, and you have in your information there a copy of the Purchasing Committee monthly report. Do we have a motion concerning its approval? Commissioner McAdoo has a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Schaefer? Is there any other discussion about that report? All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That was unanimous. Okay. Now, we will call on Mrs. Ealy, Commissioner Ealy, to start with the Budget, Finance and Investment Committee report.
We will begin with Item K2A, the ambulance service fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, increased revenue for other charges for service, $2,503. This is for medical coverage at several special events. Increased expenditures, overtime pay, $2,075, social security, $130, state retirement, $267, employer Medicare, $31. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Okay, you're then ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, two abstain, motion passes.
Item K2B, solid waste sanitation fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste sanitation fund be amended as follows. Landfill operations and maintenance, this is to provide funding for grinding and removal of a brush from the April 10th tornado. From undesignated fund balance, $39,000, to contract with private agencies, $39,000. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K2C, a resolution authorizing the 2009 Homeland Security Grant application and execution of the grant contract with Tennessee Emergency Management Agency. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available funds in the amount of $478,621 for the 2009 Homeland Security Grant program for the provision of pass-through funding provided by the United States Department of Homeland Security. And whereas the grant is 100% federally funded and is effective for the period commencing on August 1, 2009, and ending on May 31, 2012. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the State of Tennessee, Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, to accept the 2009 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $478,621. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jerrigan. Any discussion? Okay, please cast, excuse me. Commissioner Hall?
Did we earmark what this funding? I don't remember this going through public safety, did it, Mr. Farley? Do we know what this is earmarked, what it's to be spent on?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
They are specifically identified for each jurisdiction and organization within the, Mr. Commissioner Farley?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's the U.S.C. grant. Yeah, it went through public safety, because I know, actually, I presented it that night for Roger, because he couldn't be there that night, but it was, yeah.
Other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K2D, a resolution authorizing an inter-local cooperation agreement for emergency communications with Rutherford County Emergency Communications District. Whereas funds are available from the State of Tennessee Emergency Communications District to local emergency communication districts for the purpose of training and retraining dispatchers to assist in meeting the minimum requirements for training, course of study, and supervised on-the-job training as set forth by the rules of the Department of Commerce and Insurance Emergency Communications Board. Whereas in order to be eligible to receive funds from the Tennessee Emergency Communications District, it is necessary for Rutherford County to enter into an inter-local cooperation agreement for emergency communications with the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute an inter-local cooperation agreement with the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Is there any discussion with this? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, one abstain, motion passes.
Item K2E, a development tax fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the development tax fund be amended as follows. Operating transfers, this is for funding the Criminal Justice Center project and to pay some legal fees in connection with the condemnations on the Maple Street properties, and this should finish that project totally. From undesignated fund balance, $2,695, to transfer out, $2,695. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K2F, general-purpose school fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general-purpose school fund be amended as follows. Regular education, office of the principal, fiscal services, and human resources. From regular education, educational assistance, $21,506 and related benefits. Two, office of the principal, accountants, and bookkeepers, $4,333, clerical personnel, $6,370, and the related benefits. Fiscal services, accountants and bookkeepers, $9,386 with the related benefits. And human resources, clerical personnel, $1,417 and the related benefits. And health services, increased revenues for contributions and gifts in the amount of This is a grant from Christie Houston Foundation to replace the systems, the fibrillators, and this amendment budgets that grant and the related expenditures. Health equipment, $34,345. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner P. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K2G, a resolution approving the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in an initial amount of up to $2.5 billion in connection with a significant expansion of the Nissan North America Inc. operations in Smyrna, Tennessee, to provide for the manufacturing of batteries and the related assembly of electric vehicles. Whereas Nissan North America Inc. is proposing an expansion and modification of its Smyrna, Tennessee, facility for the construction and equipment of a battery manufacturing plant and the related assembly of electric vehicles. And whereas Nissan has committed to make zero-emission vehicles a reality and to build those zero-emission vehicles at its assembly plant in Smyrna, Tennessee. And whereas the United States Department of Energy has agreed to loan Nissan up to $1,600 million in order to construct a battery manufacturing plant and to revamp a portion of its existing assembly plant to allow for the manufacture of zero-emission electric vehicles. And whereas at a meeting on October 28, 2009, the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, adopted a resolution approving an agreement regarding the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in such amounts as may be requested by Nissan from time to time during the term of the agreement for the purpose of financing the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the electric vehicle project and the cost of issuing the bonds in an initial amount of up to $2,500 million. And whereas the initial bonds issued with respect to the electrical, the electric vehicle project shall have a term that shall not be less than 20 years and shall extend for such additional period not exceeding 40 years, as may be approved by the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development and the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, in an initial amount up to $2,500 million for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipment, and equipping of a new manufacturing facility for the manufacturer of batteries and the related assembly of electric vehicles at Nissan North America Inc. in Smyrna, Tennessee. According to the agreement regarding issuance of industrial revenue bonds, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein as if set forth herein at length verbatim, subject to the written approval opinion of the county attorney acting on behalf of Rutherford County and its commission. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner McAdoo. All right. Discussion or questions? Commissioner Sparks?
Well, I just wondered if Chairman Baker could, could come forward, a representative with Nissan. I had, I had a few questions.
Well, we'll have to suspend the rules. Were you, are you making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second, Commissioner Johnson, to, who would you ask to come forward, Commissioner Sparks?
Chairman Baker, if that's okay.
Chairman Baker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, come forward. Chairman Baker.
Mr. Baker, what I, what I wanted to ask is, you know, I think this is, obviously, this EV project, it's forward-thinking, you know, there's a lot of excitement. We got 10% unemployment level out there, Woolpool, plant closure, Bridgestone layoffs, I think Triton laid off. I mean, we've got a hurting community, no doubt, but my, my concern is, are these jobs permanent? I read that it says permanent jobs. What, how do you feel about these that are, are they Nissan permanent jobs?
They are, they are permanent jobs, benef, permanent benefited jobs.
So the paycheck will come from Nissan?
I am not qualified to make that. I can ask the Nissan people under it, it will, it will cover the same arrangements.
Yes, sir. If that's permissible.
Yes, we can, we have suspended the rules, and we can...
Suspend them for any and all persons, who wants to be, as the chair desires.
Okay, so we, without objection, the motion that we took, if it's agreeable, we suspended them for any and all persons that need to be answered questions. Is that okay? All those in...
Yeah.
Is anyone opposed to us doing that? Without objection, then, we can let, allow a Nissan representative to come forward here, then, please. And tell us, give us your name and your role of responsibility, please.
My name's Julie Corcoran, I'm the Director of Human Resources in Smyrna and Decker.
So these, these, these jobs, they are Nissan jobs. They're not a temporary agency, hog of employment. This is Nissan permanent job with a paycheck from Nissan.
Right now, two years away from SOP, it's, it's too early to determine that, so...
What is your ratio of temporary employment, do you know?
Right now?
Yes, ma'am.
In production, we don't have any temporary employees right now. I'm sorry, I don't have the percentage of salary.
But, but some of this mix of employment would, would be the use of temporary...
It could very well be that, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any hard numbers as far as 60%, 70% will be permanent employees?
I don't.
Yes, ma'am.
Not at this time. It's just, it's just too early. We're still in discussions about how to do it.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's, it's great... Well, I think it's, you know, it's, it's great news, I'm excited, I'm probably, I'm probably more excited than anyone, maybe in this county, you know, I have a business down the road from it, it would, it would, it would benefit me directly. Um, you know, I'm somewhat disappointed in Nissan, um, in a way that, that they utilize a lot of temps, the use of temps, and, um, I know people say that's the free market, that's capitalism, but, um, my argument is Nissan's been given a lot of tax subsidies, tax incentives, that's what we're doing here tonight, that's what's been done historically in Rutherford County, the state of Tennessee. The use of temps, you know, for two and a half years, and I know of one instance where a young gentleman worked two and a half years, um, with no insurance. This, this young gentleman, this is case in point, where y'all know where I'm coming from on this, this young gentleman was in a severe car wreck, he has a brain injury now, and almost killed him, Nissan didn't help him at all. He had no health benefits at all. This is where I'm coming at from this concern, this is not anti-business, I'm all about commerce, I think we need it, but this young gentleman worked there two and a half years, no health benefits as, as a temporary employee. My concern is these employees, whether they are mixed of temps or not, need healthcare benefits. Um, I understand a $13 an hour job is, is, that's great, especially the, like the lady that told me at McDonald's the day before yesterday, her hours are being cut back. Lady at Woolpool that lost her job, this is, this is great news, but I just think there's some unanswered questions, and, and to me, if y'all can make projections of 1,300 jobs, and you can make these other projections, I would think that y'all would be able to give us projections of what the mix of temporary versus permanent Nissan jobs would be.
You know, we're still studying process and determining what's the best thing to do. Um, I think you're aware of, most contract employees do offer benefits, and, you know, that, right now, the contractor that we deal with in temps offers.
But you know, when you, when you look at, when you look at, and I don't know where this discussion will ever be anywhere else other than right here. What we passed tonight, if we want to go back, it's, it's a done deal, and these things will, will go on for years and years. Nissan has the, the, the bulk buying power to get costs down, whether it's buying healthcare benefits, negotiating healthcare benefits. A temporary agency doesn't have that, that buying power that y'all would have. I could see the use of temps, I, I don't have, I, me personally, I don't have a problem with use of temps, but to work someone two and a half years, in my opinion, that's not, that's not temp. And I think this discussion needs to move on further, whether it's pertaining to Nissan or anything else, when you're using contract labor for two and a half years and it's deemed temporary employment. Those, those costs with that young gentleman that was in that bad car wreck, that's passed on to the taxpayers. Now that, that young gentleman, so his family is caring for him 24 hours a day, they've incurred about a $300,000 healthcare cost to that, and, um, Nissan didn't help him a copper penny. And, um, I'm all about Nissan, I think it's great, this is good news, um, people need the employment, I think it's great, but, um, I have, I just have a problem with a company that's been, been allocated so much by the taxpayers, because this is, this is taxpayers doing this, okay? And then they cannot look out for the, for their employees. I have a problem with that, and I hope, I hope the other 20 commissioners that's up here, and the mayor does too. I think there could have been a better job done with these hard numbers, I think that, that IDB could have, could have held their feet to the fire. I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this, but I'm just gonna ask you as an HR director to, to pass on my concerns, um, like I said, I hope these other commissioners have these same concerns, um, because these employees, if they're temporary, they cannot get a home mortgage. No one's gonna do a home mortgage on a temporary employee, okay? Those, those families that have children or school systems are gonna be on free reduced lunch in many cases. If these people have no healthcare benefits, they're gonna be in our emergency rooms, they're gonna be in our health departments. The taxpayers are once again gonna incur those costs, so not only are the taxpayers helping with this project, but they're gonna suffer those costs if Nissan is not a responsible corporate citizen. And that's all I'm asking is, is, is to really look at this, and even if the pay is low, I think the healthcare benefits is, is more important than a higher pay, in, in my opinion. But I appreciate the good job, Mr. Baker, I have a lot of respect for you, and I appreciate the, the work that y'all put into that, but I'm gonna vote for this, and I just wanted to share my concerns with you, ma'am. Thank you.
And our intent is to remain a competitive and a good employer in the county, so appreciate your comments.
While we have these two individuals up here, or do you have questions for them? Commissioner Schaefer.
A statement about what was just said. What I have is Exhibit C in front of me that was given to us all this evening, and I think we received it a week or two ago, and, because I know it came before budget, and it's, uh, agreement regarding payments in lieu of taxes. Section five, on page three, states that the property tax abatements provided in this agreement are conditioned upon the company's maintaining, beginning in 2014, in connection with EV project, at least 1,300 full-time jobs comprised of both full-time company employees and full-time onsite contract personnel. With the, and then it goes on about the collective annual payroll, and it was asked in budget, uh, and I believe Mr. Bolden made a statement about it, and so did Mr. Steve Miller. And that was, what is the definition of, uh, full-time company employees and full-time onsite contract personnel? And it was stated that by Mr. Bolden, according to the IDB's perspective, that he, um, deferred to Mr. Miller, but what he said it meant to, uh, the IDB is full-time employees of a contractor or Nissan, but no part-time employees. Mr. Miller advised that the jobs would be benefited jobs, he stated there was a fringe rate applied. So thus after hearing that, I didn't have any problem at all with the full versus the part-time.
All right, are there any other questions of Chairman Baker or Ms. Cochrane? All right, if there are none, then we, we will excuse you two, and we will go back into session. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor here, and then, so is there any other question or discussion regarding this proposal before you two approve the resolution regarding the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in an initial amount of up to $2.5 billion? I see no one else wishing to speak then, I think you're ready to vote then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Twenty one yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Let's see, next, uh, the Health and Education Committee, there is no report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. So we're ready for the Public Works and Planning Committee report. Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has four resolutions tonight. The first one, whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the planning department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department, and therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves the attached list of public drainage easements, Exhibit One, as submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code Anecdote 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolved this 12th day of November 2009, I so move.
Second Commissioner Black, are there any questions regarding this, uh, approval of this drainage easement? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County in Tennessee, whereas TCA 55-8-153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being maintained by the Rutherford County and has authorized it to erect appropriate signs. And whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested the following speed limits with appropriate sign, signage designated county road, Thompson Farms subdivision, 20 miles per hour, Castro Park, 40 miles per hour. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limits being imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of these county roads and persons traveling there on. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows, that the maximum speed limits being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8-153 are as follows. Thompson Farms subdivision, 20 miles per hour, Castro Park, 40 miles per hour. Resolved this 12th day of November 2009, I so move.
Do you have a second? Uh, Commissioner Jordan, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That the record reflects its unanimity. No from one. Mr. Johnson.
Whereas attached is, is an inter-agent contract between Rutherford County, Tennessee, City of Muffinsburg, Town of Smyrna, City of Ludvern, providing for the promotion and implementation of Project WET, Water Education for Teachers. A copy of said being attached hereto is Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And where it is, it is in the best interest of citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into a said inter-agency agreement. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they hereby authorized to enter into and execute for, and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached inter-agency contract with the City of Muffinsburg, Town of Smyrna, and City of Ludvern, resolved this 12th day of November 2009, I so move.
Motion and a second on the, that from, who is that? Commissioner Jordan. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
Whereas the City of Eagle previously requested assistance from the County Building Coles Department would field inspections for construction with assistance was provided. And whereas the City of Eagle now has requested the county planning and engineering department assist with field inspections for streets, roads, and drainage development. And whereas the Rutherford County Planning and Engineering Department is willing and able to perform said field inspections for street, road, and drainage development as requested for a fee of $25 per inspection. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the agreement with the City of Eagle for field inspections for construction by the Rutherford County Building Coles Department be amended to include the assistance of the Rutherford County Planning and Engineering Department in the performance of field inspections on streets, roads, and drainage development at a fee of $25 per inspection, resolved this 12th day of November 2009, I so move.
Second Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Commissioner Rogers, Steering Legislative and Government Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is a resolution rescinding the legal services agreement that was approved by the, uh, Board of Commissioners in, in our September meeting. The, the purpose behind this resolution is that during our recent steering committee meeting, the issue came up that, uh, as we pursue the Private Act, the approval of the new Private Act, that we still had a legal services agreement out there that had been approved, uh, that was, although it was dated November 1st, there was concern that the agreement itself could simply be executed once the Private Act was passed. And so the steering committee felt like that there was enough, um, reason to conduct some further discussion on the legal services agreement itself, and didn't want that agreement to go into effect essentially automatically upon the passage of a new Private Act. So for that reason, the way we ensured that it would not, that would not happen was simply to rescind the Private Act. Uh, I certainly don't want to speak on, uh, for the other members of the steering committee, but I don't think it is, it's certainly not my intention, I don't think it was theirs, that the legal services agreement be thrown out the window, uh, that it's something we will come back to and use as a framework for further discussions and debate, uh, concerning particular provisions in that legal services agreement, but that eventually, uh, it in some shape or form would be adopted, uh, once the Private Act is, is in place. So that's the purpose behind, uh, this resolution that I'm about to read. Whereas the county commission may want to further study and review the proposed new contract for the office of the county attorney, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, uh, rescind, that we rescind the vote of September 17, comma, 2009, approving the legal services agreement with Attorney James C. Cope and his law firm, resolved this 12th day of November 2009, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Commissioner, uh, Jordan was first back there now, is there discussion? If there's not any discussion, I assume you're ready to vote. Commissioner Daniels.
Just like this, now, we're just doing the first part of this, right? We're just rescinding our vote on the first, or that would have been effective as of the first if the Private Act gets amended. So we're not locking the rest of it in at this point.
Exactly. We're, we're, we're simply rescinding the legal services agreement that was approved in September.
That was my understanding, I just wanted to be sure.
Commissioner Sparks.
Real quick, I just really want to compliment the steering committee, I want to compliment Mayor Burgess with your, your diligence in trying to save us money, moving in the right direction. Um, and, and Mr. Cope, my, my question in last month, I apologize if I seem a little coarse or something, I think you've, you've done a, a great job, but, um, I'd argue if, if we'd have took this assertive approach eight years ago, we'd have got Mr. Cope's cost down some, just like you, you done, Mr. Burgess, and I appreciate it, so this is a step in the right direction, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Cope, for doing the good job that you performed for us, thank you.
Any other discussion? Assume you're ready to vote then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion was carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, uh, resolution deals with the Private Act itself. The, the commission, or, excuse me, I think the steering committee and probably the commission was concerned that, uh, we had, uh, put the cart before the horse in approving the legal services agreement before we had the Private Act in place. We're now moving forward with the Private Act itself, uh, in, in an effort to get the Private Act that currently exists, which was adopted in 1957, uh, essentially rescinded, and a new Private Act in place that allows, uh, I think, fair to say, a little more flexibility, uh, to enter into, um, agreements for the provision of legal services, specifically the county attorney and others beyond the county attorney. So we have, uh, the, the steering committee reviewed and approved a proposed Private Act, uh, as you can see, Private Act of 2010, uh, for the county attorney's position for Rutherford County. Uh, and this Private Act is, um, fairly, uh, simple, I suppose, in its essence, uh, provides for the rescension of the, um, 1957 Private Act, uh, allows. rescension of the 1957 private act, allows for Rutherford County to enter into any written agreements for the position of county attorney, that any other agreements with counsel beyond the county attorney would be approved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and that once the private, or if, assuming the private act is approved by the state legislature, must come back then at that time for a two-thirds vote by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. So that having been said, that act, private act is attached to the resolution, the resolution is this, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the attached private act to repeal Chapter 67 of the private acts of 1957 and to establish a new private act be submitted to the Tennessee General Assembly for adoption to provide for the office of the county attorney for Rutherford County. Resolve this 12th day of November 2009, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Coggan. Discussion? Commissioner Williams.
Well, I've got some concerns that have come forth tonight from the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, and since this is not going to go to the legislature until February, and we have time, I've always been taught that it's better to measure twice and cut once. So I'd just like to make the motion that we send, that we defer this for 30 days, send it back through Steering and see if there's any things that need to be added to look at it for another 30 days, and maybe it comes back just like it is, but to take some of the things that have been evaluated and get this second look at items, just to make sure, because of the importance of this, I'd like to make sure that it does come, that it's looked at real closely. So my motion would be to defer it for 30 days and bring it back through Steering for some additional discussion, and it may not be anything discussion there, but that would be my motion to defer it for 30 days.
We have a motion to amend the motion to defer this for 30 days and take it back through Steering. That's your, we have a motion on the floor, so you'll have to amend this motion. We have a resolution to approve this, so you'll have to amend the motion that's on the floor to...
Whatever it's got to do to take it back for 30 days, amend?
It's up to you to make the proper motion.
Okay, to amend it, to say that we'll take it...
You amend this resolution that we, that's on the floor to defer action on it for 30 days.
Right, to amend this resolution to defer it for 30 days and bring it back through Steering for the second time, just so we can get a better look at it.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Jordan.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would just like, if this amendment passes, and I believe I will vote for it, if this passes, I would like for the other members of the Commission to send some information to any member of the Steering Committee, but it really should go to the Chairman. If there's something specifically that you want us to address, and we had four members, other Commissioners there at the last meeting, and none of them said a word, and they had an opportunity to speak, but, but, I think that more time might be a good idea if, and if you have something that you want us to look at, I certainly think that our Chairman and the rest of us would be glad to look at it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Commissioner McAdoo.
I just got one question. Even if the amendment passed, and even if this, and even if it's a piece of legislation passed, and it's not presented to the state until February, I'm asking the county attorney, we still, being a body, we still can bring it up on the floor and make changes, even though it passed tonight? Is that correct?
Well, first of, first of all, the legislature's convened in January, and there will be a cutoff period, you'll have to submit whatever legislation you want for them to address during that legislative session sometime during the early few weeks of January.
So what is a cutoff period, I guess?
There is a cutoff date, and I can't tell you the precise date, but it will not be February.
Okay, so if we extended 30 more days, which would put us to December?
You put you to December, you'd have to make a final decision in December to get it to them in, for their January consideration before they cut off the bills.
So you're saying next Commissioner meeting will be okay?
Yes. Commissioner Daniels was, had already risen, Commissioner Schaefer.
Okay, just a little correction here. There were four Commissioners who were not members of Steering who were present that night, but I think it was just a slip, but we didn't get the usual statement of recognition of the visiting Commissioners and the opportunity to speak. So I just wanted to make it clear that we didn't just sit there without some preparation for speaking. Now, at the same time, I'd like to just point out one other thing. I'm quite happy that Commissioner Jordan said what he did, because I think more input is necessary. At the end of the Constitutional Convention in 1787, I believe it was, there were no amendments at that time, and in order to get it passed, Patrick Henry and George Mason and several other of our early...
Bob Bowden, wasn't it?
Citizens. No, he wasn't there. But in order to get it passed, now let's be realistic here, they had to come forth with a Bill of Rights, which provided a degree of specificity that Madison resisted. And as this sits right now, that same kind of specificity is missing. We don't really know what the rest of this will be, unless we make a list, or unless we simply amend the prior private act, change the words to fit what we need. And I just suggest that that's what we ought to be looking at doing when it goes back to Steering. Thank you very much.
Well, Commissioner... Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Make a comment there, please.
I apologize. Commissioner Daniels, I, as Chair of Steering, I guess it's my responsibility to recognize anybody that's in the, in the committee room that would like to make comments. I certainly didn't do that intentionally, and I would welcome any comments or inputs that you have, so I didn't mean to slight that, or if you have any questions or comments, just let me know. I'll be, I'll take all comers.
Let's see, I'm getting a bit out of order here. Commissioner Farley, I believe Commissioner Schaefer did try to rise just before Commissioner Daniels, so Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Farley, Commissioner Coggan.
I'm just going to take a second, but I think when it goes before the state legislature in the past, that private acts and resolutions that we're sending up for change to state law are two different entities, and I believe the private acts have been accepted definitely later, because they're not acted upon until usually near the end of the session in early May or something like this.
They act on those as they get them. The private act will not be officially law until that comes back to this body, and this body with at least a two-thirds majority vote approves it. They've simply endorsed your request, and then it'll be, it doesn't go into effect as law until such time as this body approves it, with at least a two-thirds majority. And this, this agreement clearly references, this private act resolution clearly references an agreement that the Board of Commissioners will have to put in place concurrently with the approval of the private act. And you will be in complete control before quote this simplistic private act which gives enormous flexibility. Every private act that's out there basically is in violation of the private act, every one of them, including ours. This will give you all the flexibility in the world to be in compliance consistently. Now, Commissioner Farley.
I'm standing to take up for our Chairman on Steering. I don't think in any way he would have slighted any Commissioner that night if they wanted to raise their hand and speak. If anybody there had a question that night or concern, or might want to make a point on this, this private act or anything about this, but if it, if it takes 30 days, I mean, as long as we have, have got to get this private act took care of first, if anybody here wants to have a, have concerns, I wish they would call any member of the Steering Committee, we'd be more than glad to listen to it. It's, it's committee process. And somehow, this process needs to get moving, you know, we, we, we're rescinding this other deal that night for the very reason that the Chairman spoke of a while ago, to keep from getting the cart before the horse. Now we're getting it done the right way. So we need to get this thing taken care of somehow, because we need to move towards, no disrespect to Mr. Cope, but we need to get moving towards a full-time county legal department, which is very much needed in this, in this county. So, thank you.
Commissioner Coggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As long as we are in the clarification business for the time being, as I recall the events of that evening of the Steering Committee, I believe it was Mr. Sandlin who was sitting directly across from me, did actually acknowledge the four Commissioners and say that we might want to give them an opportunity to speak, but as the conversation went on, that we went on to something else and never came back to that. So it is the apologies of the full Steering Committee that we did not come back to that, but there, your acknowledgement was made, the suggestion for you to speak if you wish was made, however, because of the several conversations going on at the same time, we did not get back to that. So I think everybody apologized, so we can move on. I just want to say, I don't have a problem with this, I voted for it in Steering, I'm going to vote against this motion to send it back to Steering, I'm going to vote for the private act. If we have, anything needs to be changed and we can do it tonight, I'm not in a hurry to get it done, I'm not trying to push anything through, I just don't have a problem with it.
Anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Phillips.
I tried to make a statement at the Steering Committee the other night about, it appears that, to me, it appears that all of us are working toward the same end. And I'm not sure where the disagreement really lies. I think I heard two valuable trusted members of our community that has outstanding knowledge and the best interest of the county at heart make a presentation tonight that related to the legal services agreement and the private act. And I'm not sure that we're talking apples and apples. The way I understand this process, this private act would replace the private act that was put in place in 1957 with some amendments, which we're not adhering to and are in violation of and have been for years. And it seems to be that we're concerned about Section 2. What this does, the way I understand it, it allows us to put in a new private act that gives us flexibility with the legal services agreement to change it at a local level. This thing doesn't do really anything to spell out all the legalities of what's going on with our transition into a legal services department or a new law firm, whatever we want to call it. But what it does, in my mind, it gives us as a county the flexibility to make changes to that legal services agreement without having to go through the state to change state law. And if everything is spelled out, every I is crossed, every I is dotted, and every T is crossed, 10 years from now, we may be back in the exact same spot that we are right now. This private act gives us, as the county governing body, the flexibility to take that legal services agreement and change it every year, if we want to. This is a flexible document. I'm not sure why we're having so much disagreement with this, because all this does is give us flexibility that we don't have. The legal services agreement is the thing we ought to be taking a look at. What I heard the Steering Committee say the other, the other night, is that that is the document that we're going to be looking at over the next couple of months to attach to the private act. So I don't have a problem with this, none whatsoever, but there are some folks that says we need to see the other document before this goes into effect. I beg to argue that that document is what we're looking at to put into effect right now. This document gives us the flexibility to change that with having to go to the state and change that private act all the time. It gives us and our citizens here a lot more local control than we've ever had before. And to me, that's government at the lowest level, and I think that's what we're all shooting for. I think that's what the RNA has been shooting for. So to, to say that this thing doesn't work, I think what we're really talking about is the legal services agreement, not this particular document. So I argue tonight that there's nothing that I can say that's wrong with this document, it's the other one that the Steering Committee will be taking so much time looking at. And then once again, if we don't like it next year, we can change it without having to go through the state, at least that's the way I understand it. John, am I wrong?
I agree, I agree, everything you said, yeah, well stated.
So I'm thinking that some people are talking tonight that this private act ought to spell everything out, including what's in the legal services agreement, and I argue that it shouldn't. That this document here is what we ought to be passing, and I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandlin.
Based upon, just, I mean, just to make a point of clarification, I think we all are, as county Commissioners and Steering, as the public, and everybody's looking for the same outcome of this whole thing. And, and that's good, because we're having a lot of public comment, as well as everybody on the Commission, and the Mayor, and, and our Cope, or Jim Cope is our county attorney. And so I'm going to vote for the amendment, because I, but I believe you're right, Jeff, but I don't think it's going to hurt us a bit to hold this thing 30 days, but I will ask you, as a Steering Committee member, any county Commissioner, it's been asked already, any county Commissioner have any changes, input on this whatsoever, bring it to us, because otherwise we're looking at the same document that we passed the other night, and we need to make those corrections. Don't dilly-dally around and get it to us the day before the Steering, get your comments down and what you want to do, and let's get it in front of the Steering Committee a week or two before, and let's, let's, let's get it in our mailbox or something, email it to all of us, whatever, and we'll hash this thing out on the Steering Floor with the public there, with any Commissioner that wants to be there, but it's, that's where we do it, and bring it back here to full commission in December, and let's don't get late and get this behind the eight ball in January, let's do it December, and let's get it to our representatives and get this thing approved and move on. Thank you.
Any other, okay, Commissioner Hall.
Just, Commissioner Williams, I watched that Steering Meeting via YouTube, how we've got that up. Is there a specific thing in this that you, for the amendments you've made, is there something specific that you've got in mind that you want to rehash or talk out?
Well, we really can't have a, we, we will suspend this, but do you want to respond?
I would just like to hear a reason. I agree totally with the other Commissioners' comments, and especially Commissioner Phillips and his, and what I understood that they spoke about in Steering, and what we have before us tonight, and as y'all are saying, you want something in writing to go back to Steering. I foresee y'all don't see anything that we need to rehash on why the amendments been, or the resolutions been written. I would just like to hear what, what issues we have with it.
Well, we're not, we're not addressing the legal services agreement, we're simply talking about this private act. That's, that's the resolution that we have on the floor with an amendment to delay action on it for 30 days. Anyone wish to speak that hasn't spoken? Commissioner Jordan.
I was doing good, hadn't spoke all night, but I caved in.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Phillips completely. And if you, I'm going to vote against the amendment, but if it goes back, it'll probably pass. I hope it comes back very similar to what it is because I'm tired of having to go to our legislators and beg for anything such as we can't change the, you know, the development tax and things such as that. This isn't that complicated. This is just us hiring an attorney. And if we can't hire our own attorney without going and begging for permission from the, from national, and you can only do it in the winter months while they're in session and all, then I like the resolution that's come forward because it gives us control of a very minor part of what we do. I mean, it's how we hire our attorney. It's not huge here. I mean, it is big in a lot of ways, but it's just how we hire our attorney. We ought to be able to hire and fire them as we see fit without having to go beg forgiveness or beg permission. So I'm going to compliment Jeff on everything you said. I'm going to vote no on the amendment. I hope we move it forward, but if that passes, I hope it comes back next month, very similar to what it is tonight.
Anyone else wish to speak? Now, here's two. We have Commissioner Bullen and P. and then, start with Commissioner Bullen, then Jordan, and then Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote against this amendment. If we delay another 30 days, all that's going to happen is people are going to start getting this private act mixed up with the agreement. Now, this private act is very simple in what it allows us to do. Nobody's stated anything tonight in terms of a serious objection as to what's written there. Gives us the flexibility that we've been needing for years. So I just can't see any sense in delaying on this. What the steering committee needs to be talking about is taking that basic agreement and trying to rework it so that that thing will be ready when the private act passes through the legislature. And that will probably take more than one meeting to do that. So this amendment to me is just setting up the possibility of people causing these two separate items to collide and people to get confused about it. With regard to what was said a few minutes earlier, I was at the steering committee that night. I was one of the four that was there and I didn't feel slighted in any way. It was just a great honor to be amongst them. And then, secondly, somebody said that I was at the federal constitution, that I was not there. But I did visit James Madison's grave twice. I stood over his grave twice and thanked him and told him that we were so proud of what he had done that we'd even named a county after him. So let's get this amendment out of the way. It's foolish.
Commissioner Jordan, did you want to say something else?
I just want to do.
Commissioner Williams, me personally, I don't see what the problem's going to be to send it back for 30 days. I tried to listen to both sides of it, but I don't see what's going to hurt nothing.
Commissioner P.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but I have been in contact with the chairman and he sent me an email copy of this and I appreciate all the questions you answered for me. And the last one that I had, and this is the only problem that I have with it, I agree with exactly what Commissioner Phillips said. I like this document because it gives us the flexibility to put those written agreements in place. The only thing I've got a question about, and I emailed you about that, you wrote back your answer, and I understand it, but I don't necessarily agree. It's not clear to me, maybe not being a lawyer or an attorney, I don't understand it. But in section two, the commission does the approval. And that's my point is I want the county commission to retain the power to appoint the county attorney. Now, in section two, it reads, "The terms, the conditions, the terms of office, functions, and duties of the office of the county attorney shall be as set forth." It doesn't say who the county attorney will be in that verbiage. If that was changed here tonight, I'd be ready to vote for this. If not, I'd rather come back to you and let that be rewarded so somebody simple-minded like me can understand that this county commission will name the county attorney.
Well, Commissioner, if you read on a little bit further, it says, "Entered into by and between Rutherford County and the county attorney to which agreement." So the agreement that you, whatever agreement is put forth, will contain the name of that person and you will, this body will have to be the group that approves that appointment of that person.
The way I read it is we're approving terms, conditions, terms of office, functions, and duties. And if you'd state that again, maybe it'll get through my thick skull, but I'm having a hard time reading through that.
I was just suggesting, if you read on the rest of that whole sentence, "Agreement approved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and entered into by and between the county and the county attorney to which agreement reference." In other words, that whole agreement will have the county attorney that you are appointing named and referenced in that agreement.
He'll be referenced, but nowhere does it say in there that this county commission appoints him.
That would be in the agreement, but itself would, that would be the primary purpose of the agreement to appoint. All right. Any other people wish to speak? We've had everyone speak that wishes to speak.
I have something more to say.
Mr. Daniels is up again.
Okay. Now, if we're going to get down to doing this, we do need the kind of specificity I am urging. And that very paragraph there, section two, makes reference to documents on its face that apparently either don't exist or we're referring back to something we just voted out tonight. So as a result, I want to see the guts and the content of any such agreement or proposed agreement before we send the thing forward to the legislature. I think that's only reasonable, and I guess I'm on the Patrick Henry and George Mason side instead of the Madison and Jay and Hamilton. But remember, the Constitution didn't get the Bill of Rights without Richard Henry Lee, Patrick Henry, and George Mason, and actually modeled itself on the Virginia Declaration of Rights. And I've been to the historic sites in Virginia, Patrick Henry's home, George Mason's, you know, all of those things. I grew up in northern Virginia and we were steeped in that. And I'm just very concerned that we need to be specific. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Well, I didn't mean to cause a lot of controversy over this issue. My only point was, and is, if this is a good document tonight, it will be a good document in 30 days. There seems to be a lot of questions from the people in the community, and since it's a no harm call for everybody, I don't see the harm in going back and coming back with it exactly as it is or to make any modifications because I believe we didn't get copies of this until a day or two before the steering committee met. And I'm just a part-time person in this and it takes me a while to absorb a lot of this stuff. So my only concern is that since we have the time to take 30 days to go back and see if there's any other thing, since it is something that's been in place for 50-something years and make sure that we do it right. My only point there was you measure twice and cut once, and I would just hope that you could support sending it back and give us another 30 days if there are any questions that come up because right at the moment I don't know that I have any, but I'd like to have an opportunity to look at it further to look at it. Thank you.
Excuse me. Now, Commissioner P. was, had risen to speak. Commissioner McAdoo.
Well, I found, I.
Go right ahead.
I found that when I stopped talking and tried to think a little bit, I understood what you said. But even after understanding it, what you're saying is the written agreement which will come, which this opens up, we can then in there state who appoints that attorney.
Yes, sir.
I understand that. That's not what I want. I want it in this private act that the county commission does the appointment in the private act because I don't want that changed in a written agreement down the road. So I would like for it to go back to have that changed or we can change it now.
Well, we have to deal with this motion, and Commissioner McAdoo wished, was wishing to speak, Commissioner Johnson, and you can go right after him.
And listening to the issues that were brought up tonight, why send it back to steering? Why don't we just give the commission 30 days and bring it straight back to the board of commissioners for changes? Because I'm hearing that a lot of the committee members thinks it's okay and everything, and it'll be 30 days for each commissioner to discuss, talk to the mayor, talk to the county attorney. If you want to call the state legislators, you can call them. You can talk to everybody. It's going to come back to us in 30 days. Why go back to the steering committee? Why don't it just come back to this full board of commissioners in 30 days? You can make the change within 30 days on this commission floor because all I'm seeing is going to be a big controversy when you go back to steering. And still, maybe if you present a point that you want to change, and if it's not changing steering, I'm going to hear it again in 30 days on this floor. So why don't you just bring it back to the full board of commissioners instead of sending it back to steering?
It appears that the public opinion on this is that this is hasty or we've had something shoved down our throat based on comments tonight from the public as well as just speaking to people on the street. I see that it wouldn't go back to, this wouldn't be brought back to the commission next month. It would go through steering because that's their job to handle this and to present something back to us. That's protocol, always has been. I was at the steering committee and I didn't feel, I also didn't feel slighted. I understood what happened. Commissioner Rogers, you did say that you agreed that we should be able to speak, but then Commissioner Farley asked a question and it kind of went on in discussion and it kind of got dropped. But it's always been a standing practice that anyone there can ask to speak, and I've never seen anyone denied the opportunity to speak at any committee meeting that they attend. All you have to do is ask. And that goes, as far as I've seen, I've never seen the public, which is kind of a little bit more out of the ordinary for someone from the public to speak at the committee meeting without being on the agenda, but it's allowed. It's just the courtesy of just asking because things do fall through the cracks. People don't notice someone sitting in the audience or someone distracts them, and that's what happened that night. And I definitely didn't feel slighted, but I do think this needs to go back to steering and go through it again. It's not going to hurt anything. It will help the way the public is perceiving this. So that is the plus to this as far as sending it back because we don't appear to be having it shoved down our throat tonight and be hasty, and that's just my opinion.
Okay, we've had a good discussion. I think we're ready to vote. And if somebody objects, I'm going to call for the vote. Please cast your votes on the amendment. We're voting only right now on this amendment which would delay the action on this motion. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the votes.
11 yes, 9 no, 1 abstained. Motion passes.
Okay, so the motion has passed. This resolution will be sent back to steering for their deliberation and action. Commissioner Bullen.
Chairman, you didn't recognize me before the vote, but I didn't care. But it's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I just want to say this now that it's over. I heard the statement twice, I think it's measured twice and cut once. I've also been raised on delay, delay, and you may get your way. What we have here is evidence in seat 21 that that's what's going to happen. We're going to get these two documents mixed up, and that's probably what's going to happen. There is a danger in sending this back and it's sitting in seat 21.
Any other, excuse me, any other business to come before this body tonight? Excuse me.
On the grounds that there has been a direct personal attack and the gentleman should be required to take his seat.
Well, I think we need to all refrain from any direct personal attacks and I so wish that we can accomplish that.
I was only using his own words to point out what he had said previously, and I will not take my seat because it belongs to the county.
Commissioner Bullen and Commissioner Daniel, let's refrain from any further comments, please. Now, does anyone else have any business to come before this body? Well.
He wants to vote on the motion as amended, which is to send it back.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Well, we have, the amendment has passed. Now, let's vote on the motion as amended and please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote? Anyone that would like to change your vote? You may do so now.
Record the vote.
17 yes, 4 no. Motion passes.
Okay, so we have sent it back to steering. Motion to, we had Mr. Sparks has risen to say something under our business.
Just wanted to share some good news with you. The VA call center come through planning in Smyrna last week. 457 jobs and want to compliment Mayor Bob Spivey. I spoke to him a few days ago, and I said it was 300 jobs. He quickly corrected me, 457 jobs. So it's good news out there for Rutherford County and those jobs that are immediately happening. Thank you.
We have two gentlemen here, Commissioner Schaefer and then Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I got good news too for everybody that likes country ham. They're welcome to stop by Gamble Lane, a Laverne Rescue Squad between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM Saturday morning.
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I wanted to call this to your attention, and these are two happy notes really. Mr. Joe Blackhaze was inducted this last month into the Tennessee chapter of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. That was in October. He's a coach and official and lives in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, of course. Wrestling official for 24 years. Founded the wrestling program at Tennessee State University in 1950 and coached there until 54. Rassle, played football at UT. He's in three halls of fame, including Middle Tennessee, Cumberland, and East Tennessee Football. He was an honored member of this body. He was our board of conservation chairman for a long time, member of many committees, and his family and his entire family has been outstanding citizens of this county for a long time, Mr. Joe Blackhaze. I also wanted to point out, I did not know when I came to this body three years ago that I would be seated next to a celebrity. I did not know that. And it turns out that in fact I am and I can prove it because it was in the October 31st Daily News Journal, which as we know is always 100% accurate. And it was in there this morning. Also, Mr. John Rogers and 15 other people are spelling at the Read to Succeed Spelling Beat publicly at Patterson Park. It's on November 24th. There's a dinner and a bee, and it is absolutely great fun. And I don't know about you, you do what you want, but I'm not going to stand in front of anybody and spell anything. But Mr. Rogers is going to do it in front of, and will win, by the way. He's already assured, well, he didn't really say he has. I also want you to know that I've been working with John on his words. We've been drilling every day and we're up to five and six-letter words. That's not a violation of the sunshine law, by the way. I, just myself and John, we make no policy and no decisions and discussing nothing of importance. But literacy does matter. That's the 24th at Patterson Park, and it will be, I guarantee you, a fine meal and a lot of fun and for a great cause. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, commissioners.
Is there any other business? There's no other business. The meeting is adjourned.